All right, I see it's four o'clock. So I'm going to call the December 28th, 2020 meeting of the Select Board to order and remind everyone that we're being televised for this video conference and this is on Zoom and that this is being recorded. So I will ask the clerk to please call the presence of Select Board members.
Ms. Escobedo?
Here.
Ms. Hutchakis?
Here.
Ms. Ackerman?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
President.
And myself, Ms. Bates, here.
And the full Select Board is here, so thank you very much, everyone. And I'm going to read the consent agenda, which is briefed today, the town accountant warrants for December 24th, 2020.
Move to accept the consent agenda or approve the consent agenda, sorry.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hutchakis?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. The town manager is required, Stephen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone had a restful holiday. So with the shortened week, I don't really have much of an update in terms of general town business. Much of the time in the short week was spent talking about two things that are on the agenda tonight, so I'll just defer to those agenda items. If anyone has questions about anything, any goings on, happy to answer them, but we didn't have a formalized S and P session, so.
Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow up on the discussion that we had last week about the signing of the TIF agreement, and I did see the redlined version today. And while I had to recuse myself from the deliberations, you know, before the thing was approved, you know, from a process perspective, I'm still a little bit concerned, just, you know, in the insertion, especially the first one, I don't even really fully understand the implications of it. And it just seems to me that we need to actually, you know, look at this, maybe we need to put it in as an agenda item, but it doesn't seem to me to be, you know, ready to sign unless we could sign the prior draft that was, you know, the draft that we had previously reviewed.
So I guess in the red line, that version that Chris prepared, we sent around, there were only a few, like I said, I think there were really minor changes. The one change about clarifying what the taxable property, what the taxable land is, we reviewed, I reviewed with the assessor, and he agreed that it was a clarification. I think if you wanted to take that out, I don't think it's a deal breaker for the developer, but it is substantially in the form that was approved by the board and then approved at town meeting. I don't think any of the changes changed the substance of it at all. So, and the state has already, the EACC approved basically that version themselves, so that would redoing the whole thing would kind of unlock a whole series of process steps that have already happened, or would potentially undo a lot of processes that have already been done. So, like I said, I'm happy to strike that language, it was really just a clarifying thing, or I'm happy to invite Lane Partridge here to, you know, talk about what that means in greater detail, but I don't.
Yeah, I was just was surprised because the, you know, the reference to quote "land tax," I just haven't seen that in a legal agreement before. It just seemed very odd, you know, distinct from the tone of the rest of the agreement. And again, I don't want to get into, you know, terms, changing terms or anything like that. I thought we had an agreement. And then like the idea of substantially of the form, that I totally understand that with regards to the town meeting vote, but with regards to our Select Board vote, the agreement that we signed needs to be to the letter of what we approved, it appears to me, as opposed to of the form of, you know, it's a different stage of the process when the Select Board is approving a document. And so I guess for me, it would be either, you know, we re-vote the new draft and then, you know, then sign that, you know, it just seems like we're signing a different document than we approved. And that doesn't, from a process perspective, again, it just doesn't sound right.
Susan?
Yeah, I just had a question and a comment about the TIF. My comment was, the date we approved it, on the document it says August 31st, but it was actually September 3rd. We were still in an active discussion on the 31st, and we met three days later and actually voted on it. And my second question, or my question is to Stephen about when you said the state has already, what have they approved? What version of the TIF or the EEAC?
The redline version that the developer had signed. But again, I think that that's, you know, I've spoken to the ACC, I think it's a relatively, if we wanted to take the language out about the land tax, and I think Matt, and that'd be so my response, but my recollection is the land tax designation, as opposed to property tax, was to distinguish it from, avoid confusion of personal property tax, that also may be assessed. So that the part of the parcel that is being leased was all that was, like I said, all that was going to be subject to taxation of the parcel was the portion being leased for the project, which was not the entire parcel. And that was always the case, and so the language, if you take the language out, that's still going to be the case, it's not going to change any aspect to that, so.
Yeah, it did seem to me that A1, you know, that clause was already really clear about the improvements, you know, it just seems, it seemed really clear.
But what it wasn't clear about was parcel, you know, tax is, you guys all get a tax bill, I assume, and in your tax bill, it has your parcel ID, and so taxes are assessed on a parcel basis. And so there is this parcel that CHDC owns, but not all of the parcel is going to be taxed as a part of this project, and then therefore the TIF isn't going to apply to the entire parcel.
But the rest of the parcels all open space, though, right?
And non-taxable, because it's being leased by CHDC.
Right, so that's why it doesn't seem to me to be.
It's a variation that I think would, I think it was, so if someone said, you know, Christopher Heitz isn't paying taxes on the entire parcel, you know, we could say no, that was always going to be the case, and that we wanted, and like I said, I looked at it as a very minor change to clarify what is the status quo. But again, I don't think it's significant enough to, like I said, we could strike it and send in the version that the board wrote on it. Like I said, I think all of the changes are, the only other change I think was of note was the completion date, and that really is just to reflect the amount of time that has elapsed to get the document approved and get it submitted.
Jane?
First of all, Susan, was that the end of your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Did I answer the question?
Yes, yes, but the date part, you know, if the date is wrong, when we approved it back in September 3rd, I think that should be corrected in the document.
Sure.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that to the extent that this is immaterial, that this addition is immaterial, we should just get rid of it for, I agree with Matt, what we signed is not this, and it's only going to get more, I think that you're hearing discomfort, especially when, I don't think there was confusion before, and therefore I still don't understand why there needed to be clarity, but that's regardless. I think we should revert to the document that was signed, since that was one we all reviewed before signing.
I agree with those updates that Stephen mentioned about completion and the approval date from the Select Board.
Well, and Chris's fix of that one address, they had a typo.
Right, and Chris also put back the two lines that got omitted in Section B about the general laws, which I think means Massachusetts general laws. I guess my discomfort is also with trying to understand how this happened so that we don't have this problem in the future, because I do agree with Matt that town meeting approves substantially in the form of, but when the Select Board meets three or four times and we get into the weeds on language, then we expect that it's going to be exactly what we finally agreed to. So I just want to make sure that we have that process straightened out so we don't have a future kerfuffle like this.
Well, I think, I agree, the only thing I'd say is it's common practice for documents like this, the reason why you use substantially in the form is to finalize it, there are times where you discover typos, wrong words asserted, especially one like this where there's been like 159 different versions of it that have gone back and forth. That's why you'd say not verbatim, because there are Scrivener's errors and things like that. So this, again, I do think that even though this project, and there was a lot, this project was somewhat controversial and there was a lot of discussion about it, which gives it a thicker lens, so to speak, for which we have looked at it, the process of how we got here is pretty typical in terms of finishing up documents and getting them ready for signature, even post-vote.
You're absolutely right for typos, and I would agree with that, but I think the reason that I flagged it last week was when that section got added, I didn't understand what it meant, and I still don't totally understand what it means. I was wondering if it meant that the building improvements are exempt because they are affordable housing, and affordable housing is exempt. I didn't really understand what the whole thing meant. A Scrivener's error, that would certainly, you know, be within the realm of something that you'd want to fix, probably let us know, but, you know, but something that just gets added, it sort of came out of the blue, and I didn't understand how it got there and whether, like, did town council look at it?
No, and I think that that's, I mean, and how, the fact that it came out of the blue is something that I'm responsible for, and I'll be honest with you, this was a case of haste makes waste, and I was trying to be fast with it, and I should have taken, and I tried to get the document processed because of the state timelines. How that happened was the developer requested that the language is a clarification, we reviewed it with, I reviewed it with Lane, because Lane's the one that really is going to be doing the assessing and had been, and had been really, Lane had actually been a central figure in helping develop that TIF agreement. So he knew a lot about the agreement and the process, and so I went to him, and he said, yeah, that's basically what we're going to do anyway, so it is, it's a helpful clarification. And since, like I said, it just described what was going to be happening, again, I viewed that as a non-material change to the document, and that's a misread on my part.
All right, I think everyone has expressed their concerns, and this is not the first time we've had the opportunity to do that. Having, you know, there are several of us on the board who have watched this over the years with former town manager as well, sometimes we had more visibility, sometimes we had less visibility on similar things that had to get signed off on and submitted. I think we've been clear to Stephen about how serious we are about needing to see at the Select Board level the actual document itself, and that's what we're approving and seeing. And I think we're making some specific requests right now, and I'm going to try to summarize those and make sure we're all on the same page here at this point. Stephen, you're willing to make some modifications to revert back to the document that the Select Board signed, is that correct? Correcting the date?
Yep, correcting the date from the 35 to September 30.
And allowing for the correction to the address? And what am I missing?
The completion date of the project.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that was, it's obvious that a lot of time has elapsed, so the end date should be, reflect that.
Yes.
And Linda, is that new A4 language, are we saying it's going to stay in or come out?
We're removing that.
Good, because I still don't understand it, okay.
But, and also the two lines that Terry had pointed out that just got missed about filing the annual report with, you know, the verbiage that was in the original.
And I should just mention that even when restored, that language says "general laws", not Massachusetts general laws, so MGL, not GL.
Yep.
Okay, so I think, Stephen, can we live with all of the things that we've outlined here?
Yeah.
And the Select Board will see the final copy yet again?
Chris will distribute that as soon as possible, and I guess we'll have to figure out a way to get it signed, whether it's electronically or, you know, each of you can respond to him directly saying, "I approve," and then we can either do the Adobe e-signature thing, or we can drive it around.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So when you receive it, look at it, and if you agree with it, just reply to Chris directly and not all, and just tell him, "Okay to sign."
Okay, yeah, so, you know, and I'm sure you'll agree, this kind of detail is, and you've already said it yourself, this kind of detail is critical on high-interest items, but should be reflected, I think, in all the official things that we're doing in terms of accuracy and what we're asking the Select Board to sign off on.
Sure, no, I completely, I understood the gravity of it, and I thought I was doing, I thought I was giving it the time and attention that it needed, and I just, I gave it time and attention, just not sufficient and not, and especially on the attention side, and I should have known better, so I apologize.
All right.
What I should have done is given it to Chris to begin with, is what I should have done, to have him fix it.
Yeah, all right, so I'm going to leave it there. I think we've got agreement, and thank you, everybody, for your input on that. All right, I think if there's no other questions or comments for the town manager, I'm going to move on to the chair's remarks. All right, on a slightly lighter note, but certainly just as important, you know, as everyone's looking forward to the new year, I know that some of us are looking for meaningful ways to participate in our community, and so I want to encourage those who are listening or will be listening to this tape, as well as friends that you'll reach out to, to consider signing up for one of our town committees. We need your volunteer help, and we need your expertise and your talent. There's a long list of committees that are listed under the volunteer button on the front page of the town's webpage, and you'll see, when you go there, you'll see a long list of committees, and you're sure to find one that's going to pique your interest in terms of your time and talents. And in addition to considering your participation to benefit the town, this is a great way to build some skills for your resumes as well. So please take that seriously and find a committee and submit a green card, which you can also do online, and we look forward to you joining us on one of our important committees, really key part to our town governance process, so we need your help. So I'm going to move on now to the next agenda item, which is the COVID-19 vaccination planning. And Stephen, I didn't know if you wanted to introduce this, I see that Chief Judge is with us today as well.
He is, but I will introduce it. I think as I mentioned before, and we did present to the school committee last week to talk about using the CCH lower parking lot to serve as a site for a vaccine clinic for first responders, and so we went to them to kind of relay that that's what we're going to do, or we're planning on doing, we do, I think I've mentioned in the past, we do have a, the town has an emergency distribution plan for vaccines that was created maybe 15 years ago, I think during H1N1, and it does identify the school as the site, but it's been a while since we've talked about that plan, so we wanted to bring that back to the attention of the school committee, show them what we were intending to do, and talk about our commitment to work with the school to ensure that our vaccine clinic was scheduled in such a way to not disrupt school operations. And so we had a lot of conversation about that. The initial conversation involved, and the initial planning conversation involved the town of Carlisle, because they are obviously a partner in that facility, and actually the conversation with Carlisle led to a larger discussion about, you know, should towns be partnering together to be able to get vaccine from the state to have your own vaccination clinic? You have to be, you have to have at least 200 first responders that you're going to vaccinate. And like I said, and I say first responder, as you know, the governor has set the order of whom, of when people are going to receive the vaccine, and the first responders are kind of, are first in line, along with vulnerable populations and care centers. So we end, really, we, Tom Judge and I reached out to our peers in several of our surrounding communities, and that led to a coalition representing about 400, or more than 400 first responders going in under Concord's hand, if you will. Susan Rask prepared an application to the state on behalf of these communities to have a clinic, so Tom can pick it up from there and fill in some of the details and some of the, and where we stand from a planning standpoint, but, you know, this is all come, this has all come together over the last week and a half or so, so it's been a pretty quickly evolving situation, but we do think we are in a good spot, and we'll be able to provide, not only is it going to be a great opportunity to provide our first responders with the needed vaccines, but it will also be a great learning experience if or when a community vaccination clinic will be needed. So Tom, do you want to pick it up from there?
Sure, so like Stephen said, we've, one of the things we learned a couple of weeks ago was that to become eligible to receive the vaccine, you had to have a minimum of 200 first responders that were planning on taking the vaccine. So to accomplish that, we had to partner with other communities, and we partnered with Carlisle, Bedford, Lincoln, Maynard, and Sudbury, and that pushed our numbers up right just above 400. So last week, Susan Rask applied to the state for the vaccine, and that's been approved, so we're now, you know, a little subgroup of the state working together to get first responders vaccinated. And the, this has all been happening in parallel with the plans for putting up a site at the high school, which is truly dual purpose, and we're going to be able to use it for testing, and we're going to be able to use it for vaccine, working hand in hand with the school, because we're trying not to interfere with what, you know, with what the purpose of the school is. So we're going to be, you know, we're going to be working around their hours, we'll probably be doing a number of evening hours and a number of weekend hours. But we did acquire through a lease a temporary structure, which if you remember when we had the fire in West Concord at the fire station in 2017, there was a temporary structure that was installed in the far end of the MBTA parking lot. It's the same company that's going to be installing the structure for us, it's actually arriving tomorrow, and it's half the size, it's a 33 by 33 structure, which we'll be able to run some testing out of, and we'll be able to do vaccinations out of. So this has been, it's been quite an effort, you know, emergency management, working with and supporting public health. Susan Rask has done a phenomenal job, I don't, I'm not quite sure that she sleeps, but she's been doing, she's been doing a phenomenal job with this. We are anticipating receiving first responder doses as early as the second week of January, and once those doses are administered, then there is a 28-day period before the second dose. One of the things that we are really planning for is the likelihood that the local health departments are going to be called on to do mass vaccine administration. So what we're looking at using the site at the high school for the first responders is really using it as a dry run for down the road when we get to Phase 2 and Phase 3. And it's actually very opportune that, you know, that, you know, we are going to be hosting the site, we're going to be bringing in several hundred first responders, and we're going to get a chance to work the bugs out before we get to Phase 2 and Phase 3, where we will likely be doing public vaccinations. And I say likely because there hasn't been an awful lot of guidance, there hasn't been a lot of, there hasn't been a lot of guidance from the federal government, as I'm sure you know, at the state level, I mean, they're relying on the federal government for guidance, and a lot of this has ended up, you know, just ended up at the local level. So based on, based on what we know and based on what we're assuming, we're planning ahead for Phase 2 and Phase 3. As Stephen mentioned, the town has a mass dispensing plan, which is required for all communities, so it is reasonable to assume that that plan will be put into effect. The effort that has gone into this in the last two weeks is incredible, I mean, I can't, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I think every town department has been involved in this in one way or another, not the least of which is CMLP, which worked, they worked really hard all weekend getting electrical infrastructure in place for us, which meant setting poles and running new cable, and it's just incredible what those guys can do, they make it look easy. CPW has been working with us in their engineering department, and they're going to be providing, they're going to be providing Jersey barriers to the site for protection, the building department, the electrical department, every department's been involved in it, it's an incredible effort. And I will, I will tell you something that Susan said to me today, she said it amazes her how much Concord can get done in a short time when we need to, and I think she's absolutely right. So that's where we are with the planning, I've heard Stephen use this expression before, so I'm going to use it again. In many ways, we're building the airplane in flight, but it seems to be coming together.
Well, thank you, Chief, and all of you who have worked on this for your leadership, I think we have some inkling of, you know, how you have to turn everything around on a dime, and you're doing it with some terrific results. You know, I happened to attend the school meeting the other day, and there were some very thoughtful and thorough questions, I thought. One of the questions that came up was who is likely to be administering the vaccinations? Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Sure, so, you know, we could end up with, we could end up with nurses that live in the community, doctors that live in the community, school nurses. One of the things that I'm happy to report is that the workforce in the fire department, everybody here is at least an EMT basic, and the Department of Public Health last week released a waiver allowing vaccinations to be performed by EMTs down to the basic level, and working with the labor organization in the fire department, they have, they've agreed that they want to participate and they want to get involved in this, and as, not being compelled to do it, but on a voluntary basis, they'll be compensated, obviously, for their work. But as soon as I put out the, as soon as I put out the request for those interested within, within a day or two, I had half the department responding that they're interested. So I think you're going to see a number of firefighters involved in the vaccinations, along with healthcare professionals from the community.
Yeah, if I can just, sorry, if I could just build on that a little bit, depending on how this scales out, I think for the initial first responder clinic, we, obviously, the crew that not only are EMTs, but also the EMTs in other communities will help staff this. As we, as this potentially scales up, we may be looking for community volunteers with medical backgrounds, obviously, our first preference for being vaccinators are people who do have some experience in the medical profession, but depending, like I said, on the scale of. But depending, like I said, on, on the scale of it and some of the other logistics, we may need volunteers for things like, you know, administrative supports, you know, traffic, you know, parking management, things like that. So these are things we're going to learn, I think, as we go.
Okay, good.
And my, I'm sorry, Linda, my answer was specifically, I was thinking more phase two, phase three. For the first responder clinics, if we don't have enough vaccinators available, you know, within town, Town of Sudbury has been very gracious to offer, I think, 15 people from their Board of Health that would be available to come over and help us with that.
Terrific. Jane?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. I just, I wanted to say that I, myself have received volunteer notes from members of the community who have backgrounds in healthcare or, you know, the appropriate experience to be available and pass that on. So it really is amazing how many people who are, you know, for whom this may not be in their, their normal job description or, or line of, of work, but who are already thinking about how they can help.
It is, it is, yeah, everybody wants to do something to help get this behind us.
Carrie?
So Chief, this is really fantastic, and I want to thank you and the whole team for your leadership and your, everybody's willingness to participate, the fire union, the volunteers, Susan Rask, the whole, this is really wonderful. So I had a couple of questions. The temporary structure that's riding, is it going to be located at those high school parking lot, or, or where is it going to be?
It's going to be in the lower parking lot at CCHS, in a middle row, but closest to the BD side, on the Walden Street end of the parking lot.
Great. And I also, my other question about who's, who's doing the vaccinations was already asked. Well, my final question is, I know that these vaccine, they have to be stored at a very low temperature, so are you, are you going to be having all the freezers and everything in this temporary structure, or?
My, my understanding from Susan, from a meeting today, is that we're going to be getting the Moderna vaccine, which does not require the, the extreme low temperature. And it, where the vaccine will be stored hasn't been decided yet, but it will not be on location. It will be, it will be moved to and from on day of, and nothing, nothing will be left there. It's going to be in a secure location.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Well, thank you for being here today to give us a sort of a preview of what's to come. I, I know you're, you're, as you, as this unfolds, there'll be a lot learned, and we'll be anxious to hear from you in a couple of weeks to see how it went.
Great, thank you.
So again, thanks for the leadership, and keep up your strength, and stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
Okay. All right. I think the next item is to consider reserving curbside parking spaces for restaurant takeout. So Stephen, would you like to speak to this, please?
Yes. So last, I believe it was last week, my Economic Vitality Strike Team, Beth Williams, Marsha Raskison, Aaron Stevens, and Jeremy Romanelle, and I were having a discussion about January and February, which I've been saying for, I think, a couple of months now are really are kind of concerning months for, for local businesses, and that once the holiday shopping season ends. And various ideas have been floated at various times about, you know, reserving parking spaces and, and doing different kinds of things. And we had generally shied away from those, because they can, they can sometimes have, you know, the opposite of the intended effect. Other businesses can feel like their customers are being displaced, and they can be somewhat controversial. And so when we were having this meeting, I think it may have been Monday or Tuesday, we were having this discussion, and I said, I don't, I don't want to get into reserving parking spaces, you know, it's not something that you would normally ever do, and it can, you know, can be a bad precedent. After the meeting, I realized that while we were having that meeting, the governor announced the new restrictions on restaurants that are going to be in place for two weeks, two weeks as of now. And it just felt like such a gut punch for what I know is going to be a very difficult time for restaurants, that I just thought, we've, we've got to push the envelope and try and be as creative as possible to make it easier for takeout, because that's the only chance these restaurants are going to have. And so I sent out basically to Concord Business Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce to kind of take a survey of their members, to see how, if they'd be supportive of reserving one space in front of a restaurant that wants it. Basically, like, if you've ever gone to, you know, restaurants who have, sometimes they have their own parking lots, they'll say, you know, curbside takeout space, reserved space. A sign along that, along those lines for, like I said, for, for establishments that want it, so people can pull up, get their curbside takeout, and leave relatively seamlessly. And the response back from the business community was overwhelmingly positive and supportive of this, and everyone kind of having a shared recognition that it's really the restaurant's time now, they really need our time and attention in a way that they, it hasn't happened yet. And so what I'm asking the board, but again, this is another one of these ideas that's moving, evolving fairly quickly. And so what I'm asking the board for is the, the authorization to develop and implement the, the plan, what the sign is going to, you know, what's, working on signage, maybe limiting it to the hours of operation for the restaurant, so maybe creating a, a unique sign for each space, depending on what, what the establishment wants. And then also working out some other details that, that may, that are presently unknown, but just give, because the select board generally determines parking rules, I'm asking for that authority to create these spaces.
So I too heard from the business partnership, and it favoring the opportunity for this to happen. So are there any comments from the select board? Jane?
I think this is, sounds like a, you know, a, a good plan, and, and certainly one that would at least lay even the playing field between the restaurants in town that have, you know, significant parking access because of their location, and those who are, you know, who are in main business sector, sectors and don't have accessible, you know, door-to-door parking. I guess the one question I had, and I know that because this is temporary in nature, it wouldn't necessarily involve the historic districts, but signs tend to have many, many fingerprints on them. And so I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that. And if we're, and if the proposal is to put forth a very temporary situational set of signs, define that temporary nature, so that there isn't sort of a unintended consequence of, of post, post-pandemic, everybody's been trained that that's, you know, that parking spot belongs to such and such a restaurant.
That's, that was the primary concern, I'm sorry. That was really the primary concern of setting that precedent. You know, this is, you know, we, we haven't talked much about the emergency authorities that the, the board adopted back at the beginning. I do think that this type of suspension of the normal rule, if you will, is something that is, would be appropriately applied here. In terms of the signage, it's just going to probably be an eight-and-a-half, 11 laminated sign zip-tied to a particular parking meter, not a, not a sign that would be mounted to a structure. And the intent is really to have it in place for as long as these new additional restrictions remain, and not, you know, if things reopen more quickly, then the signs would come down. But just, we just felt like it felt strongly that, that they just need a lifeline right now.
Man.
Would there be, like, enforcement actions around these signs? I mean, in, under what kind of authority, I guess, would we enforce them?
Well, we have suspended meter enforcement.
Right.
For, I think through March so far. And so it wouldn't necessarily be a police enforcement. It would be, I think, each, each establishment would make sure that, that folks weren't parking there. But they're really, and this is one of those things, this is a detail, when I said there are details yet to be worked out, if there is some kind of enforcement mechanism, we can apply. But I, I think we'd be challenged by the fact that we're not enforcing, you know, parking, other than obviously handicap parking, things like that, but we're not enforcing meter restrictions. So I think we, we would want to make sure that, that the establishments policed the use of the spaces themselves, and we could try and be responsive to people who park instead of use it for the intended purpose.
Yeah, that's what I wondered.
Maybe issuing warnings or something like that, but that's something I'd have to talk to Chief O'Connor about.
Yeah. And then, I mean, I'm all for doing anything to help the restaurants, but then I've also been shopping around Concord, and I have to say, parking access has been pretty good, e- even in the, the village centers. I mean, I've been able to get pretty close and eat, you know, pick up my food from restaurants and shop, and I, I feel like even during the holiday, you know, buildup. And so I just wonder if reserving spots may actually, again, you know, create more empty spots that, that aren't serving people. So I, that's all I'm a little bit worried about, is the potential for it to backfire. But hey, we should try anything we can. If, if the business community wants to try it, we should perhaps try it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, well, I've no, actually, I've noticed, you know, when I've, when I've been downtown and in West Concord, it seemed like the holiday shopping season seemed to go pretty well. You know, I haven't gotten feedback, I haven't checked in with the business community since, since before the holiday, so I'm not sure if my, you know, anecdotal observation matches their, you know, their books. But it's the proximity, Matt, like everything.
Yeah.
You know, some, you may not mind parking three or four spots away to walk up to the restaurant to get your food. There are many who do. And so I think if people know that they can just pull right up to the door, it'll be an enhancement for them to, to order takeout.
Susan, did you have a comment you wanted?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to tag on to what Matt said. I, I found it relatively easy to find parking all during the holiday season, and my thinking about this is that there'll be far less traffic generally in January, February, March than there are October, November, December. So I, I don't think it would present, I, I don't think there would be an issue with reserving some parking spaces, because it seems to me there'd be plenty of open ones.
Carrie?
I think it's a great idea. I think anything that we can do to help the businesses. I know when it's snow, when there's snowbanks on the road, and if you have to park three or four spaces away, and then figure out how you have, carrying all this takeout food, and you have to climb over the snowbank, and let's make it as easy as possible for the businesses, and especially since they seem to have no objections that we know of.
All right, thanks, everyone. Madam Clerk, I think I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Move to authorize the town manager to develop and implement a temporary program for reserving parking spaces for restaurant takeout.
Second.
Okay.
Ms. Escobado?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
All right, that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Yeah, good, hopefully that helps the restaurants. So the next item is requesting special legislation regarding our town caucus. We've mentioned when Carrie was here, a couple meetings ago, we mentioned the challenges of holding the caucus this year, given trying to discourage gatherings and so forth. Some material was provided in our packets in terms of a draft letter proposed to send to the governor. I certainly learned that we were one of 13 communities that's required to have a caucus. I didn't realize it was only 13 that had that requirement. Clearly, as we heard previously, Bedford has already filed similar legislation, because they also have an early January caucus. So is there any comment about this? Carrie?
Yes, I think I asked last week, but I just want to make sure. So if there's special legislation, or if there's a way that the select board is able to cancel the caucus, what is the process then? It's, is it just that we do it through nominations?
Yes, that's the proposal. The caucus would be canceled, and people would file nomination papers by February 4th, I believe it is.
So they have to get a number of signatures.
So the legislation is asking at a minimum of 10, but if the legislation has not been passed, then I think the, the number will remain at 50, a minimum of 50.
Yeah, okay, that could be hard to do during COVID. Okay, all right.
Right.
If it passes, they only need 10 signatures.
Correct. That's the, what's proposed in the legislation, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments about this? I will just note for myself that I did contact the State Ethics Office Attorney of the Day Today, just to make sure that there's no conflict of interest for me to participate in this vote, since we're also highly paid as select board members. Apparently, that's not going to be an issue. So I, I just want to go on record that I did check that. And I see Kari's joined us. Kari, we, did you hear the question that just, Terry just asked?
I, I think I did the question, I was listening to it offline, so.
Would you like to comment on that further? I hope I answered.
I didn't hear your answer, though, because I was actually just in the process of switching to being here, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll give it, and then you can correct it as you need to. I think the question was, if there was no caucus, what was the, what would the process be? And I said the candidates would file nomination papers, I thought by February 4th was the date.
Yes, and I think that the legislation also proposes reducing the number of signatures needed to be collected, should the caucus be canceled, because there wouldn't be a lot of time to do that.
Correct. And a minimum of 10 signatures, I think I commented on. But if the legislation, if we haven't received the legislation, I commented that we would still need 50 signatures, is minimum 50 signatures, is that correct?
That is the current law.
Yeah. So we're going to have to see how this falls in line, and hope it falls in line quickly.
Yeah, I think the timeliness of this is essential, and so I think this is another thing with circulating whatever, if the board approves a letter for signature, we do need to get it into the, through our legislative delegation as soon as possible.
Right.
Is, is the legislation also allowing for retroactive approval, so that if, if the, if the select board moved ahead before the legislature had finalized it?
So as I read the act, the, the draft act for the, that the governor might put forward, should he accept our, our letter of request asking for relief, it looked like that to me in the last paragraph, that's how I read the last paragraph?
So depending on how far it is along in the process, it, it might be an option for the select board to consider moving forward.
Yeah. Well, it'll be certainly in concert with you to help us figure that out.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Kari? Well, then I would entertain a motion.
Move to send a letter to Governor Charlie Baker requesting special legislation to authorize the Concord Select Board to cancel the in-person town caucus in 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobado?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous, and the chair so declares. And I just want to summarize again that the, the select board is taking this extraordinary measure because of COVID-19, and trying to, in the interest of public safety for everyone. it because of COVID-19 and trying to, in the interest of public safety for everyone. So the next item is the annual, approval of annual license renewals. And is Jeremy here today? Okay, Jeremy? Thank you for all the preparation for this. I know it takes quite a while to get this, to this point. So does the board have any questions? Matt?
Yeah, I saw on the inholder and lodging licenses that the Best Western's not included. Is there a reason for that?
They haven't submitted an application. So if they are operating without a license, that's inherently, you know, they're not allowed to operate. But they have not submitted an application and they were not on file for the previous year that I was here as well.
Well, they're advertising rooms on the internet, so.
I'll take it over that and then walk the, Ms. Stevens, you'll probably call up on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to them.
We have met, and I think we already have one application. We know that will not be ready until January. And in the past, we have had some establishments who were late in filing and we often have had to take some additional action in January. Thank you for catching that, however. Susan?
I assume like last year, it's the clerk has to sign each one of these, which means going to Squaw Sage, I mean, excuse me, going to the temporary office Knox Trail.
Yeah, Susan, so we can be in touch about this afterwards. I mean, you can either sign it electronically or if you want me to just prepare the, the list and have you sign them. You can either come in or I can swing by you and, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you, Jeremy.
And for the purpose of informing the public, I'll just comment that the, the annual license renewals that we are considering are in the categories of liquor licenses, common vehicular licenses, class two used car dealers licenses, weekday entertainment licenses, livery and taxi cab licenses, inholder licenses. Okay, Matt?
I have one more, which is under the liquor licenses. I see the 99 Restaurant and Pub, which closed. So I, I'm curious about that one.
Yeah, so they submitted a renewal application, the corporate office did. And that's, I guess it's really up to the board's discretion. They submitted a completed application. All the materials are there. So it's really up to the board if they want to renew that license.
It makes it easier to lease, sublease that facility, that space out to a, potentially a new restaurant if it's already licensed.
Okay, as long as it's not irregular, I, you know.
Directly transferable?
I mean, it would require, it would require a board vote to transfer the license as opposed to issue a new license, so.
Yeah, we usually meet like the manager record and all that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to renew the 2021 annual liquor licenses, common victualers licenses, class two used car dealers licenses, weekday entertainment licenses, taxi cab and livery licenses and inholder licenses as listed in the memo dated December 24, 2021.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
I will second it. I do have a question that in previous years, we've had to read every single one of these off. Is that, is that policy been changed because of COVID?
Um, so as far as I'm aware, what we did last year is I just submitted the memo. So, you know, if the board, all the licenses are there, the clerk.
I'm not questioning it, it was just a technicality.
I think Jane is right. I'm not sure why, but I do remember Mike reading through them all and what I remember from other towns. And I don't know if that's required by law or just a tradition.
Jeremy, I guess the question I would ask you, or it could have been tradition. Could I, you have to submit all of these to A, B, C, C, correct?
Liquor licenses, yes.
Yeah, and, and they all, they were all approved.
Yes, there was all the, all the paperwork was submitted in completion by all of the licensees listed in the memo.
Yeah, okay. So Jane, by any chance, do you remember if, what a particular reason might have been or?
Like I said, I, I wasn't sure whether it was tradition. And I'm trying to remember whether it was liquor licenses were just lumped together and then common victular licenses were read. I mean, I don't know that there was a formula here. I just, I'm reaching into dusty corners of my memory banks.
Yeah, okay. Jeremy, why don't you read them and we'll be covered rather than having to revisit this?
Sure.
Lucky Jeremy.
All right, so you want me to read each one of the licenses for each category?
By category, if you'll name the category. Yeah, thank you.
Amazing. So liquor licenses, we have 80 Thro, 99 Restaurant and Pub, Adalita, Asian Gourmet Sushi House, Chang'an, Colonial Inn, Camella's, Concord Market, Concord Provisions, Concord Rod and Gun Club, Concord Wine Spirits, Crosby's Marketplace, Dino's Casino and Pizzeria, Farfalle Italian Market, Fiorella's Concord, Karma, Main Street's Market and Cafe, Musketequid Sportsman's Club, Nishadac Country Club, Nine Acre Wands, Paparazzi, Rapsgalian, Residence Inn by Marriott Concord, Salt Box Kitchen, Cheese Shop, Trails End Cafe, Vineages of Concord, Walden Liquors, Woodcell Table. Now those liquor licenses. Common Victular Licenses, 80 Thro, Adalita, Asian Gourmet, Bedford Farms Ice Cream, Cafe Nero, Chang'an, Club Car Cafe, Camella's, Concord Country Club, Concord Tea Cakes, Devera's Natural Gourmet, Dino's Casino and Pizzeria, Dunkin' Donuts on 1191 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts on 1643 Sudbury Road, Dunkin' Donuts at 117 Thro Street, Emerson Hospital Cafe, Farfalle Italian Market, Fiorella's, Hot Coffee, Helen's Restaurant, Karma, Main Street's Market and Cafe, Nishadac Country Club, and Showbrook's Bakery, New London Pizzeria, Nine Acre Farms Convenience, Northbridge Inn, Paparazzi, Rapsgalian's Kitchen and Bar, Reasons to be Cheerful, Residence Inn by Marriott, Versini's Pizzeria and Restaurant, Salt Box Kitchen, Sorrento's Restaurant, Starbucks, The Cheese Shop, Trails End Cafe, Twin Seafood, Barrel Farm, Walden Italian Kitchen, Woodcell Table. That was common victular licenses. Class two licenses, Bill's Auto Sales, Bradford Auto Sales, Cone Truck Sales, Concord Gas, Kevin's Automotive, Nano's Auto Body Service, Second Chance Auto, Swedish Motor Repair Works and Repair, Swedish Motor Works and Repair, Village European Sales, let's see. Weekday Entertainment Licenses, Adalita, Main Street's Market and Cafe, Paparazzi, Rapsgalian's Kitchen and Bar, Residence Inn by Marriott Concord, Salt Box Kitchen, the Colonial Inn, Trails End Cafe, and Woodcell Table. Taxi Cab and Livery Licenses, Home is Best Care and Lincoln, Lincoln Concord Coach, Inholder and Lodging Licensees, Colonial Inn, Hawthorne Inn, Northbridge Inn, Residence Inn by Concord Marriott, Timothy Wheeler House of Concord.
Thank you very much for doing that. You can have a glass of water now.
Yeah, before we vote, I, I wondered about the Fife and Drum Restaurant at the Northeastern Correctional Institution. Is it, is it exempt from a common victular's license? I mean, I know that you go in and you do pay. Is it subject to a victular's license or no?
It's a good question. I mean, I'm, I'm not aware that haven't, they're not on our, their licensee list. But if they, if they do prepare and serve food on site.
They're in Concord.
Yeah.
Anyways, I don't think it's any reason to hold up the vote, but I, I just think that it's something to think about.
Or the state deals with that directly. But yeah, good question. Susan?
I just had a question. Is the Dunkin' Donuts at Nine Acre Corner in Concord or is that over the line in Sudbury?
It, it's in Concord.
It wasn't on the list.
So there's one Dunkin' Donuts that does not serve food to be consumed on site. There's no tables, which I think exempts it from, we went through this last area. It exempts it from being on a common victular licensee.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Did we second this?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Escobado?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous and the chair so declares. Jeremy, thanks for all the work that you do on these things throughout the year, actually. So thank you. All right. Committee liaison reports, who would like to go first? Susan? Someone needs to beat Susan for first.
Okay, I just had one meeting this week. I, I wasn't actually at the meeting, but I did watch the tape. It was the planning board on the 22nd. They had, the bulk of their conversation was around the, the project, the 16-unit subdivision, 1440 Main Street. There's several parcel numbers involved in that. And they had a lengthy discussion about, primarily centered on the, the lots for affordable housing or for open space. And what they ended up voting on was to reserve lots A1 and 6 for a park or open space and lots 7, 13, and 16 for affordable housing. The other items that they briefly discussed, the, the hearing on the Pittsburgh Turnpike development is continued to January 12th at 7:30. And they recap the zoning board meeting noting that the floor area ratio was a, was a topic for both committees and that in addition, the planning board is considering possible town meeting action on the floodplain, which I think is a regulatory thing. It has to be approved. Two, two family houses, groundwater conservancy, earth removal and fill bylaw. We have an earth removal bylaw, but a lot of towns, we're told, has an earth removal slash fill bylaw because there are consequences for each action. And a possible PRD density bonus. So those are the things that they'll be working on between now and when the warrant is issued. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Susan. Who would like to go next?
Just had a question relative to that planning board meeting and just the reservation of, of lots. I assume that, that the town would have to purchase them and then they would have to come to town meeting with a warrant article. Would that be our warrant article or the planning board's? And any idea of the cost?
Well, they would be at market rate is what, we'd have to purchase them at market rate. And yes, they would have to come to downtown meeting. And the warrant, of course, would have to identify source of funding or the article. So my sense about it was that it, it may not be all of these for that. That's the main reason because of cost. But also they wanted to make sure they could purchase five lots if that was possible. So whether that's what they move forward with is something else again. But yes, it will be a town meeting action.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else like to comment? So I'll just briefly say that I did attend the regional high school meeting where the regional vaccination planning took place. And I've already commented on that. It was a very thorough meeting and informative. Yeah. Okay, Jane?
I'll just quickly say I didn't have any meetings last week.
Neither did I.
I didn't either.
It was a short week. All right, thank you, everyone. The miscellaneous correspondence, I'll just say that we had a significant number of pieces of correspondence from, and a butter to, and defendant. One particular butter and defendant of Esterbrook Trail with complaints about individuals not following the rules as posted and other issues. And that basically was the correspondence this week. Any public comments? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Escobado?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Happy New Year, everyone. Please have a safe one and please heed the governor's most recent restrictions regarding gatherings. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Good night.